Greetings wonderful LinkedIn audience and this is going to be something new. Here at UTAS we're put together a CGEIT prep sessions with compliance expert Karina Clever and actual practitioner and manager over at Kelly Gilmore and I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. I'm going off script guys. So first of all, let me do the disclaimer. We have put a lot of work into this and it will be a lot of work in these five sessions on helping people get their CGEIT. We love ISACA. We have nothing to do with ISACA. Okay? Let me say, we have nothing to do with ISACA. ISACA approved or whatever, so don't get mad at them. This is just us who appreciate ISACA and the work they do and appreciate the certification called the CGEIT. Okay? So with that being said, let me do some introductions and then we'll jump into it. Karina, why don't you go first?
Thank you. So I'm Karina Clever. I've been in IT for 35 years now. Started as a computer operator and I've been doing GRC for 20 years now. Own proudly operate clever compliance and we work in medium to small to medium sized businesses establishing their governance programs. Kelly?
Go for it Kelly. Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Kelly Gilmore. I have been in IT for 30 plus years. I focused primarily on security for the past 15. I've had several positions, everything from draftsman stooge to all the way up to SVP of information security. I'm in Orange County, California. Loving the weather today and very happy to be here.
That's right. This is all Pacific coast. Karina's up in LA. I'm over here in Sina, Irvine. First of all, let me define an acronym. CGEIT is certified in the government's governance of enterprise IT. You know, most of us all have our CISSP, right? I mean, that's right. It's your standard date. I had to get it for Cisco. I had it and they said Delta everyone had to get it for Cisco like 15 years ago. This is a different cat and we'll talk about the little, in fact, I probably have Karina go a little more on top of this than me. But it's a executive certification to help the managers and the executives understand better IT governance and thus to better understand management. Management not just of IT, but management period. Why don't you take it on top of that, Karina? What is the point of this CGEIT?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually echo what you said. So there's kind of two levels to CGEIT, actually three. The first one is for that C level, right? So the C level, who wants to be supportive. They want to provide direction. They want to say, here's what I expect in my dashboards, but they just don't know what they're asking for specifically. This is a great way to kind of highlight establishing that governance program across your organization and then just saying, being able to say to people, here, here's how we manage risk. Here's what our operations look like. Here's how we're adopting, here's how we're measuring controls, right? So that's kind of that first tier. The second tier is the person who wants to strive to get into executive management. They need to be able to see their environment holistically across the board and figure out how do they take governance principles and apply it across their enterprise. And the very last is really for that person probably in the IT space who wants to, who wants to understand how their actions are actually impacting overall governance and they might not really know that everything's interconnected, right? It's that, it's that joke with the elbow meets the shoulder bone and the shoulder bone meets the right. It's all connected in your enterprise. So that's really what CGEIT is trying to explain to all of us.
And Kelly, any other thoughts? And just to let everyone know, no one's got more certifications than I know than Kelly. Why don't you name some of them that you have?
Well, CISSP of course. I'm an MCSE, Microsoft certified. I don't have that many, but I'm also certified privacy professional for Europe as well as a CISM. But formerly held a certified CISO, however, too much work to keep that one going and I just have to have a life. But kind of following up on what Karina said, I look towards, I look forward to this certification and I'm on my journey for this certification as well. Because it does provide numerous advantages to individuals, but also the organization. You know, and I, I'm going down this path because you know, it's professional knowledge and the skills that it brings to be able to talk to governance, to be able to talk to the board, to be able to understand what they're, how, you know, how they're looking at the world and to, you know, help you use this certification to help educate them to make everybody's life better from the organization all the way up to the board.
Fantastic. All right, let's just jump into it. And the way we're gonna do this is I'm gonna moderate for Benner's or whatever. Worse, I'm gonna ask Karina questions about, about how this relates to governance and then in the real world, Kelly giving all his positions and not only executive, but line management of security. So he's got the real world hands on experience. Karina, let's start with COVID. And I mean this, I know you, I've talked to Karina all the time. It says she loves COVID and if you're studying for your CGEIT or want to know anything about it, it's heavily, heavily based on COVID. So Karina, what is COVID and why would this credential be so heavily inundated with COVID and COVID standards and practices?
Okay, so COVID, the current version that we're on is 2019. I believe it got released in February officially. February 2019 and then the pandemic hit, but I think that's the most current version of the framework. Love, love, love COVID, have always loved it because it's actually written to be scaled, right? So with any framework, with any framework out there, not regulation, with any framework that's out there that you're using in your operations, you have to remember that it is just a framework. It's just a recommendation. You don't have to apply all of it into your organization. And COVID is intentionally written to be able to gradually implement into your environment. And that helps with maturity and continual improvement in the right level of risk management and establishing your architecture, all of it, right? So it is by far one of my favorite frameworks and CGEIT really is built a lot on that framework. Kelly?
Yeah, I've always had a warm spot in my heart for COVID. COVID is, is, well, the industries I've worked in kind of varied from like software development type companies, broadband, you know, building circuits and things like that with Broadcom Corporation all the way, you know, up to in financial, financial companies. And in COVID, it works, it's preferred for industries that are stringently regulated. Financial, healthcare, government, you know, those types of industries. All of those benefit from COVID structure, structured approach, I guess would be more accurate. Ensuring that IT supports and aligns with the business's objectives, goals and objectives. But at the same time, meeting strict standards and as Karina said, it's, it comes in layers or I'm not sure of a better way to say that, but it's not an all or nothing. You can go into it, you can dip your toes into it and then move into more and more specifics from a maturity standpoint with, with your governance and your policies and procedures. So that's what I really like about COVID.
Yeah, I guess COVID is also a nice stack of framework, right?
It's a framework.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Standards for, yeah. Okay. Good deal. Stands for control objectives for information technologies. Okay, let's start going into questions and where we came up with this. We did a lot of, we collected a lot of review materials, et cetera, from ISACA and from elsewhere. And said, hey, let's create discussions about the whole, both the world of governance, what CGEIT is saying about it and in the real world. So start with you Karina. Straight easy question. Greatest benefit of strong IT governance? As a governance person, of course you're a bit biased, but what's the benefit of strong IT governance?
So IT governance is necessary for all organizations because it touches every single part of our functions, of our org chart, of our metrics, of our finances, of our correlating departments, right? So we want to make sure to have that core foundation in place. So if you kind of imagine, if there are functional areas across your company that can produce some of the metrics and we'll be talking about that a little bit later in the scorecards, right? So if you have, let's say vendor management as a competency area, you want to create metrics that will feed up into an overall governance posture and health of your governance across your company. If you have finance, if you have HR, if you have a control like all new employees have to go through security awareness training, right? That metric needs to feed into this overall governance program so that you as an executive can say, okay, well, I know where we're at with our targets. I know how well we're tracking to our targets and I also know what some of the risks are for our targets. And we're going to get a little bit deeper into all of that. But really governance needs to be kind of sewn in and embedded into the entire company. And that's the way that we can really see how well we're executing against our operational goals.
Nice. Well, you're nodding your head in the right direction Kelly. So it sounds like in the real world, that is what good IT governance is, eh?
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I've always found the most effective reason for IT governance, of course, is strictly organizational success. Without a good IT governance program, you know, IT controls, I guidelines, that type of thing. You know, having those around risk management procedures, assessments, things like that, business strategy and company goal alignment, regulatory compliance, resource optimization or utilization. And you know, those IT performance measurements and improvement to continue, continuous improvement for maturity of your IT governance processes. It feeds all the way, you know, down to everything from infrastructure to network to health desk, you name it. So that, to me, that's probably the most important piece is like organizational success can't happen without a good, without good IT governance.
Yeah. And I think Karina, you have some more thoughts on this?
Yeah. So the one thing I kind of want to reiterate is IT is there for the success of the business, right? Regardless of how much we don't like it or regardless of maybe how much we do like it, we want to make sure that we're closely, closely aligned with our lines of business in our company. And I think being sometimes in siloed IT, we do tend to forget that because we want to do really, really well at our own functions and we want to just knock it out of the park. But it's important to understand that we're there to support the business and have them be rock stars. We want them to be enabled to be rock stars. So we want to definitely keep that in mind and understand that governance also supports them in their quest as part of the overall company kind of posture.
Yeah. And I can see as Karina learned of the CGEIT prep materials, that's the way it's framed. It's framed as saying, what is the purpose of IT governance? To serve the enterprise, not just IT, not just compliance reports, but to serve the enterprise and to help the enterprise run more smoothly and better and more efficiently. Okay, okay. Good stuff. All right. Yeah, there was, because and just FYI, we're doing this, we're gonna, we're organizing the days based on the domains. And we might do more of a domain one because that's like 40% of the test. But this domain is, is called the governance of enterprise IT. And one of the things that I learned about it, I know nothing about before getting into this, is something called the risk register. And so let's ask our panelists what exactly that is. Karina, why don't you start? What is a risk register?
Okay, so we have to remember that there are two types of risks and there's very, very sometimes competing philosophies on this, but I think really optimally, we want to bring this together. If you do not have a mature risk management program or department and you're starting with managing and identifying risks, there are the framework risks that you might get from CIS or ISO 31000, right? You've got these kind of like a force majeure, like an earthquake's gonna hit or there's gonna be a flood or there's gonna be reputational risk. So there's these framework risks and then there's the actual risks for what happens to you in your organization. The only way to know what those are is to define your controls. So the sequence is, right, I have my documents. Inside the documents are controls. And those controls, if they fail, if they're written the right way, you'll know when they fail, will trigger a log entry into your risk registry. And so now you can take an actual concrete item instead of something that's more ethereal and start tracking against that risk and put it on your risk register. So there's some logic and science to how to manage a risk registry, but if you just start with that, you'll be able to kind of keep things centralized. You can also look at your 10Ks as an example. If you're publicly traded, this was actually really a lot of fun during RSA. Publicly traded companies, there are some people that are on the 10Ks that didn't even know that they were listed on 10Ks. It's fun. Because if you're publicly traded, go out and see if your name's listed on the 10K and what apparently you're accountable for and if someone even talked to you about that at your company. Anyway, that's I think a separate topic, but risk management as a company needs to be part of your core operations. It needs to help you make good decisions. And so if your risk registry listing is a combination of those framework risks and your real live operational risks, then you're going to be able to actually manage your future a little bit better. You mitigate any risks a little bit better, make better decisions.
So how long is like a risk registry, Karina?
It really depends on how many risks you are tracking, right? So and it depends on the health of your documents. One of the problems right now with documents is the templates that folks are trying to use to create their published documents use very ethereal words occasionally and periodically and sometimes and you know, an occasional cab meeting to Karina might be once a week and an occasional cab meeting to someone else might be once a month or once a year. And so unless we have those very definedly specified controls with ownership and timing and what does that outcome look like, it's almost impossible to actually flag a control as failing, hence causing a risk because you don't even know what the actual initial control is supposed to be and what it's asking you to do.
All right, Kelly, flesh this out into real world, risk registers.
Well, yeah, thank you Karina for that because you actually put some sanity to some of the things that have been running through my head about, about risk registers. But in my experience, risk register has been a tool used primarily by the steering committee or for a GRC committee. And in the, you know, what I'm familiar with, we kind of started out cataloging the risks to the organization from a cyber or operational aspect. But I've noticed, I kind of put one, two and three together after you said what you said there Karina. As we've matured, we've brought more of the framework specific risks into the register to basically bring it up a level. So you know, the risks themselves have to be categorized and classified and the assessment of the nature of the risk, the likelihood and impact, you know, those are all part of the register itself as far as documenting it. You know, but that, that's what's used by the GRC or by the board sometimes even, I guess. You know, this is what's used to prioritize the risk management, risk mitigation efforts and build contingency plans as well as identify responsibilities between the GRC and different stakeholders. You know, regarding effectiveness evaluations, reporting, stakeholder reporting, senior management, board of directors, et cetera.
And how long have you seen these risk registers in your world?
I started with an organization back in 2017 where we began following COVID. And you know, we caught on to the use of a risk register, you know, to track risks to the organization. So it's been around for a very long time. I don't think you're exposed to it until you, you've had a little more experience from a governance perspective, which is, you know, key to mature organizations. And you know, and what a mature organization will implement as far as IT governance.
So it's almost like, kind of like how mature is, are they in governance in looking at their risk register? So Karina, do you help companies with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the thing is though, the typical disconnect is that the documents that are published out to teams don't have very prescriptive controls. They don't have well-defined controls. And so when a control fails, that it kind of creates this bigger and bigger rift between actual operations and the GRC team. And because of that, I think that IT governance kind of starts suffering because now they don't know what are they looking for? How do they know something's even failed? How do they even know something's broken? And when, and that risk registry is the thing that you want to use, but that's really effective when the controls are well-written.
Got it. And Kelly, in your world, who creates, who owns, who's, you know, is updating this?
In my world today, that would be the risk office, so chief risk officer. And then of course, you know, I, everybody dotted lines into them. You know, those participating in either the steering committee or the compliance side. Because compliance, you know, in some like financial organizations, compliance is, is key, of course. And they typically manage and maintain that, at least in my experience.
Got it. Okay. Lots of questions on board and IT governance. Okay. So Karina, why don't we start with you? Okay. In the world of ISACA and COVID, what should be the involvement of the board in IT governance?
I think the first thing to remember is that all of this will fail and never ever happen unless the board is supportive of this.
Oh yeah. And one of the add to our audience, that's a huge, one of the questions.
Right? I mean, this is not happening unless there's, unless the board is perpetually saying, how are we doing with our governance? You know, what kind of measures are you making? How are you implementing governance across the entire organization? Who's the champion inside each one of those to kind of bring that adoption and change forward inside each of those organizations? So really, the board not only needs to support, but they also need to understand where are the risks? So you know, having had pretty much only my, my best friends are at C levels or greater, the biggest complaint tends to be, God, it's pretty lonely at the top because you got the folks who work for you and all they do is just agree with you and give you nods and thumbs up and everything's working just fine. Boss, go have a good time. Don't worry about the weekend, right? But the reality is they just want to know, if something's gonna break, what is it? And what, you know, what's my vulnerability level? What do I need to know? Just tell me what I need to know so I can help you. And many times the board is in the same way. They get very, very limited opportunity with some of the technologists on their, on their, in their companies, right? And they just need to be able to ask the right questions. So CGEIT really kind of enforces that governance principle and guides you on what should you be asking for? You know, and how to deliver the information to show those pitfalls. You want to know what the pitfalls are because unless you know what they are, you can't work around them and you can't support them. So COVID has broken up into five different domains, right? And each one isn't, is kind of built to give the board direction on how to navigate this. And they all kind of in their way provide a bit of a checklist for that C level, right? I'm gonna go over them really, really quickly. Evaluate, direct and monitor. So you kind of have to understand what you're looking at here and how you're setting direction and what are those things that you're going to be looking for? That's when those controls come into play, right? Align, plan and organize is your next bucket. So you want to make sure that you're aligning again to that line of business. Remember you're there to satisfy the business's operations. Build, acquire and implement. Acquire used to throw me off in the very beginning. It's actually just buying new equipment, getting new licenses. It's some of the administrative asset management functions, right? Deliver service and support. So how are you managing the delivery of all of these services to your lines of business? How are you supporting them and are you giving them that menu, right? Think ITSM. Are you giving them the menu of, you know, we can give you the regular client, the regular laptop or the souped up laptop with the right approval? And then monitor, evaluate and assess. So that's your long-term kind of longevity capabilities.
That was great. Okay. And yeah. Kelly, thoughts? Thoughts about the interaction, IT governance and the board? Ideal, real world, what you're trying to do, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. The more the board knows, the better, you know, my life is. Yeah, it's from my perspective, it's really important for the board of directors and senior management to understand, you know, how IT fits into the big picture. By IT, I mean, everything from computers to software to how you connect to the internet, you know, and how IT is running, you know, running the business. When, when the board knows about IT governance, which again, is just how IT is managed, they can make sure, help make sure that what the company is doing with that equipment, the technology, that it matches up with what the company wants to achieve. And when, when you're in that, when that's in alignment, you know, it helps them make, you know, more informed decisions. You know, I don't, I don't like to have to spend an exorbitant amount of time with justifications and those types of things. So the more they know, the more they understand, the better. You know, the easier it is to get your point across as far as here's a reason for something to be done. You know, especially in data security, risk management, the, oh yeah, and IT resource optimization and budgeting. Those first, those first strings get opened a lot quicker and easier when you, you, your board understands what it is you're trying to achieve and how it meets that business goal, that strategy that they're trying to achieve. So keeping that in alignment is really important and helping the board understand what that is. The more they know, the easier your job becomes. And to be honest, kind of turning that over, you know, a more mature board is like what Karina said. They're gonna want to know. They're gonna want to have that exposure and that knowledge about what's going on within the, you know, the company itself.
Yeah. And aligning, dear audience, is something that is, comes up again and again. All the CGEIT reviewed materials is how do you align IT with the business objectives? And that's what governance is. Karina, just have to go a little off script. You say, you know, aligning as well. You say, you know, lining as well, how does I T align and communicate with the board?
Okay, so, all right, so, um, establishing, well, first understanding the requirements, right? So when you understand what the line of business is trying to do, so as I T, you might be servicing different functions. So for the finance group, keeping, uh, actual operations going is a lot more important than, um, for for, you know, finance systems going opposed to H operations, H R needs the H R A system. So really understanding the requirements for uptime, for redundancy. This is actually going to go into a lot of the data requirements. So, um, so governance, I'm going to say is like, um, uh, like a measuring stick. You have to know what your target is. You have to know people, process, technology, your favorite three, right? What is supporting that charter and that target? How do you measure the attainment of that? And then, uh, how do you maintain governance through the operations of that?
Got it, got it. A- anything on top of that, Kelly?
Well, measuring and Oh, that was really good.
It is good, no, it's a, okay, there's there's another concept that always came up, and I think you mentioned a little of this, uh, Kelly, in our discussions. Is the I T strategic plan? I'll start with Karina again, uh, Karina, the I T strategic plan.
Okay, um, I'll go, I'll go a little faster because, uh, because I could go on and on about this forever. So, so, uh, at clever compliance, we we use this thing called end to the fourth. Now, next, near, never, right? So we take initial defined controls and then we categorize them out into what are you doing now? What are you going to be doing next? What's coming up near? That's your three to five-year plan, which is actually what this is talking about. And then there's never. So on the now, uh, controls that you already have, controls you can measure, controls that have an owner, controls that have an actual specific timeline. If they fail, a control that can generate a risk statement, a risk registry entry, right? So that's now. The I T strategic plan kind of talks about, uh, the near and the never. The near in clever compliance land is, we've got a project plan working on this. We have a project manager assigned, we have budget, we know what controls we're going to be executing in the next year. The strategic plan is more of the three to five years. This is on your quarterly kind of summaries, right? That you're going to be sending out to your clients, to your executives. You're going to be saying your board members, you're going to be saying, these are the controls we're going to mature to in our governance program over the next three to five years, once we get these ones done that are currently living inside a project plan. So this is our next charter and then these are our strategic charter plans.
Yep, I I can say that our, we we have a the course of I T strategic plan and and our company's goals. And each department's strategies are are documented. And our P I T strategy, uh, you know, is documented as well. Undergoes regular review, we're always kind of looking out, um, one year, three year. We haven't, we haven't, uh, really looked past three years. But, you know, we're we're in a continuous improvement model as well. Always trying to forecast what we can. But we're also, I'm right now, uh, the industry I'm in is is kind of volatile. Uh, with, you know, with interest rates and things like that and how that affects, uh, affects the business. So, you know, we we risks and and, um, budget are are always, you know, high on that 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 strategy. The strategy topic, so, you know, regular review, quarterly reports to the board, sometimes monthly. And outlining those key performance objectives. And again, how we align with the business goals.
And and I have to say, Tim, thi- this is great for me because I've read all the theory stuff in the C G I T prep materials and all this, and to hear Kelly and Karina just talk about, this is invaluable for your brain. So Kelly, I have to ask you for this I T strategic plan. Once again, who comes up with it, right? Who owns it? Who is it presented to, et cetera?
Uh, I T, I T management, um, owns it. So if you C I O, uh, CISO, if your company has a CISO. You know, all any senior manager, manager, director, um, the top staff. All of the, all of the leaders of the I T organization. So, um, at at least in my experience, we've all participated in, um, you know, creating the strategy, uh, as well as review and and then also championing. You know, that which is defined within the strategy itself.
Got it, good stuff. All right, this is something that's through the entire entire review materials as far as the enterprise architecture. Okay, so this is where, you know, with really the, you know, the, uh, theory is supposed to hit the hit the hit the road, right? So take it away, Karina, let's talk, start to talk a little about COVID and I S A C and and I S A C, come on, a brain.
The easiest way I think to think about this really is, and I'm going to use a really old, uh, kind of analogy, is your foundation. Right? And then you could, you could start even before the foundation. And I know Kelly, uh, uses this example, it's the blueprint, it's the permit, and then it's the foundation, right? So, so your enterprise architecture really encourages and says, hey, um, you can't do anything without any published guidance for your folks. And so in one of my slides, I actually have a picture of a boy with a softball bat inside a basketball, wearing a basketball jersey and having a football helmet on. And the thing that he's trying to bat is a combination ball of a basketball, a football and a softball. And so, you know, your public, your your documents serve one of two purposes, your published documents. They tell your staff what they need to be doing and they also manage operations. And whether you call that a standard, a process, a policy, a template, a procedure, okay? Define those terms in your governance program, right? As far as what is your document stack look like? As part of your entire governance program, that's going to be one of your templates. Define those terms for your company and just use them consistently, right? And so now you're saying, okay, I'm providing guidance for the folks who work for me. I'm also providing guidance for expected operational outcomes. And again, writing those controls in a way that say, here's who does it? Or the function that does it, or the computer that does it, here's what the expected outcome is. And here's how often I do it. That will give you proof for all of the collateral that you're gathering through your vendors. Through your, think about all of those third-party vendors that you have when they send you reports. That is actually proof for the controls that you have listed inside your documents. Leverage that and use it to give to the auditor, hey, look, my vendor's giving me this pen test result every single month, every single whatever, right? Whatever capacity you're in in I T, it can be leveraged. So basically, um, I think, to summarize, I'm going to let Kelly talk. To summarize, right, you've got, you've got your
And I have to say, Karina, I like what you did with that. I I never heard it, you're like, said, yeah, call it an enterprise architect, architect, call it whatever you want, okay?
Call whatever you want.
And I'm sure Kelly's not, has headed the right way, we'll go, but that that was a good, good point, okay?
Yeah, yeah, just define it and then and this is how you establish your governance program. Use COVID to establish that maturity and the controls that you're measuring first, right? And then establish that foundation for your company and then start growing from there, right? And and that's the only way to know if something's going wrong, if one of those controls failed. Now you're entering into the risk management space. But at least you can make good decisions on risks as they're happening, right? So that's what I have
Kelly, I think she gave you a lot to go off of. Go for it and talk a little about E A in the real world.
Yeah, in the real world, um, I I come from an architectural background. Before I went into I T, I was an architect.
Yeah, like real architecture people, like like buildings and offices and that stuff, architects.
It was, it was a good time. But, um, you know, just just as as Karina said, I look at E A as as the blueprint and the specifications. Building a building, you have, you have two primary documents, the blueprints and the specifications. And E A helps manage the complexity of the building, of of building a structure. The structure, of course, is your governance program and I T and how it's managed. How, you know, its future, E A helps manage that complexity of the I T systems by providing that clear framework, um, for for how everything, you know, fits together. Which improves not only I T efficiencies, but it also really helps with with, uh, making a smoother adaptation or transition to to new technologies or change in the organization.
Interesting, and and who, once again, who creates the enterprise architecture or whatever the thing? Who then owns it? Who's it presented to? Oh, that was Kelly.
Yeah, it's it's owned, it's owned, it again, it's owned by, uh, the the I T management staff. Whoever the leaders are in the organization. But it's also put together by almost everyone in in the department. You know, it takes, uh, it it takes a village, um, to to build an E A. The enterprise architecture is a, you know, can be a beast of a document or a series of documents, policies, procedures, et cetera. So getting getting everybody involved actually really helps build that E A and makes it makes it a mature E A, um, that that more than five people in the organization are going to understand and read.
Got it. Anything added that, Karina?
Well, I think I want to kind of talk about how do you start with that? How do you start with getting kind of your hands around an E A, right? So, um, I think first is understand your scope. Um, and then make sure that you have a plan to execute against that and understand what you're executing for, like what the requirements are. You want to make sure to capture the operations as they stand today. Because unless you can actually define and measure where where your operations are right now, you, there's no way for you to be able to project forward and kind of have a vision to where you want to go to. And again, use those, uh, risk management principles to actually make decisions, uh, on failed controls and the controls that you've identified for for maturity and the ones you're moving towards.
Love it, love it. Okay, I'm going to revisit business needs here. In my readings of the C G I T and all this, et cetera, governance, primary function is to map governance to business needs. Can you give some examples in life, uh, Karina, how how this is is happening in in the governance world? That you're trying to take what the business needs and turn it into controls, et cetera?
Absolutely, so, so look, sit sit, sit down with your finance department and order some pizza and close the door and say, hey, what? What do you want? How can I do this better for you? And I'm actually going to give you a real-life example. Your life example was, um, L O A, leave of absence. There are some people who are full-time employees that are salaried, uh, who go out on disability, but they still check emails every single day. And so when they check emails every single day after six to eight weeks of disability, they come back and they say to H R, you owe me back pay. Which, uh, if it gets to court, most of the time the employee wins. So some decisions, some companies are making the decision to suspend access if somebody, if an employee goes out on disability, right? As a result of this, because they need to be getting money through disability instead of through disability and through their employer. And so what ends up happening is this conversation between I T and H R can literally take months, right? So the conversation I was having was, uh, hey, dear H R person, would you let I T know that Karina's gone off on disability? And, uh, for six weeks and you need to suspend her access? And and H R says to me, absolutely, but you know, I T's so busy all the time. I hate to, I hate to do that to them. You know, just throw work on them because then I'm going to have to update them if the date changes. So I go to I T, hey, I T, would you accept information from H R if they tell you Karina's out on disability? Oh, sure, sure, I would accept the information, but the problem is, you know, H R, God, they don't really know all the time for sure because sometimes they're waiting for the doctors. So there's these two parties who are making assumptions about what the other one will do with this business decision, this lasted for four months. I wish I were joking. I got the both of them in one room and it was a decision made in ten minutes. That decision got reflected into a published employee document that has a very specific control associated to it, which says that when somebody goes on disability, H R will notify I T within a period of time. And then if there's any changes, this this is how that correlation will work. And it worked really, really well. Just one example for I T to understand what service they're providing to the business. Whatever is the business in their company, all of the adjoining organizations, figure out what the targets are there and create those governance measurements for each one of those services that you're providing those businesses. And then that way, now you're talking, you know, resource management, risk management, continual improvement, all of those things are addressed. And now you're growing as an entire company collectively.
It's funny, before you go, Kelly, I gotta, I'd say, Karina, I know a nonprofit that needs your help. They have a, uh, there was bill collecting. And it was just, everyone would just write an email and this one person wrote back and one of them, yes. One of them came back and said, this person's really way too aggressive. It was like five forty-five in the morning on a Saturday, right? And and like, like you just said, you get, you you get everyone in a room and create a policy.
Just define it.
Yeah, and define it, take it away, Kelly, this is your life.
Yeah, it's it's interesting that, uh, that example you gave, Karina, because I think we had this conversation a little over a year ago, um, you know, and we've been around for a long time. Some things happen, um, when they're supposed to and some things, uh, really don't. You know, the the L O A, someone going on L O A, um, should they have access, should they not? Do they want to take away access? Do they not want to take away access? Is it based on the manager? Does the manager make that decision? Who makes that decision? I'm going to hire a contractor, but they don't need any equipment, therefore they don't need I T, therefore we don't need to create an account. Therefore, we don't need to tell anybody but H R. Well, no, that's not actually how these things work. And when, when you, you know, when we documented the process for this, we didn't really realize at the time that that was actually a good, like, you know, a governance process. That, um, it was just they were tired of finding about out about these things, you know, three weeks after the fact. Um, or we get a question, it's like, why, why does this person still have access? It's like, well, nobody told us that they shouldn't. So, uh, it it's it's very interesting, um, that 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 that's going on out there, it's not just me. But again, you know, governance, uh, I T governance requires I T and business to move in the same direction. You know, overall, that that's about all I can say.
Yeah, I'm going to add to that really, really quickly. I just want to throw out there, this is something I'm seeing, uh, on a lot of SOC twos. Please, please, please watch your independent contractors and thank you for bringing that up, Kelly, because they bypass H R. Uh, and when they leave and the hiring manager tells them that, you know, their contract is over, they forget to create the ticket to do the access for a vacation. So please, please somehow, so for many of the SOC twos that get reviewed by clever compliance, we're always finding that, uh, contractors are bypassing the standard package kind of parameters within H R for onboarding and offboarding. Just a quick three second.
Real world, okay, I'll let, let's, uh, we're going to, for the last seven minutes, and we're going to do, let's try this. And we're, you know, that was a lot of fun. And we will be, uh, we'll do more in two weeks from now. And we're, we're, you know, that was a lot of fun. And we will be, uh, we'll do more in two weeks from now, more of the domain one as well. Probably about three or four uh questions because it's the, it's like forty percent of the test. But here, let me show my skills in Zoom. Um and what I'm going to try to do is uh to uh show my screen here in real time. First of all, let me hit a slideshow over there. And then I'm going to hit something called share over here. There you go. I know those kids know how to do this. Okay, I'm kidding. Okay, so um this one, um information security government awareness is best established when it senior management supportive data ownership, assets protected or identified, is there purity certifications are issued? Um I have to, this was actually stated by Karina, so you know the answer, Karina. Which one is that? You're on mute. You don't like me. She's angry at me.
Sorry, no, I took a sip of water. When uh when, when, when senior management is supportive, none of this happens unless they've set the temperature downstream.
And that's pretty much Kelly was saying, in the real world, that's how it works. Okay. Which of the following is the primaries for defining and managing the enterprise IT strategy? It has become an entry standard, it directs short term IT goals, it approves the efficiency of IT services, it contributes to business value and according to ISACA, at least the review materials, which one do you think it is, Kelly?
Hmm.
Yeah, you got to put on your
A D, I think. Am I on mute?
It is D. It is D. That's exactly what the ISACA review materials say. It contributes to business value. I'm just saying, that's a repeated theme, is that governance is about uh um the, you know, providing, making sure the business value is prioritized. Okay, uh which one of the following twos is the most effective to communicate with the board of directors? We didn't talk about this um at at all, but this is a good follow up of our competitors. When communicating with the board of directors about the business value of IT. Karina, I'll go to you.
So so remember that you've established this governance program and you've created these little hooks along the way for all of these competency areas that are feeding into your balance scorecard, right? So that is the thing that needs to actually uh contain all of the metrics that you can make decisions off of.
That's uh, Kelly, I have to ask, IT balance scorecard before I was doing the uh doing the study for this, never even heard of it or so. Uh you want to give a little uh details on that?
Sure, um it's it's been around a while. Um I actually heard about it the first time through uh I think by CISSP um training back in the day.
Better than I did then.
Um but it it provides, you know, a holistic view of the organizational performance. Um not specifically IT though, across across the multiple dimensions of financial, customer internal processes and and learning and growth. Um, you know, other frameworks like COBIT may 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 focus specifically on IT governance and management, but uh you know, balance scorecard gives you that that much. Um you know, you can, you can focus it on IT or you can focus it on other departments and and gives you that that very holistic view, really. I can't think of a better term. A holistic, a holistic view of 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 performance and
So Karina, how do you work with companies that that have nothing like a balance scorecard? Do you help them make one or I'm just curious?
You, literally, you have to start with the published documents and the controls in them. And then once those controls become realistic reflections of what happens in the operations, uh they they give you two results. They give you one, if you failed or if you passed, right? And if that has failed or passed, now you're updating the scorecard. You're saying, you know, out of these one hundred controls that we have, uh you know, we're routinely failing these seventeen up here over and over and over and over again. We can't collect evidence for them, they're not being executed on time, vendor's not coming through or our operations isn't happening. Whatever is the case. And that summarization of those controls is really what goes up into your balance scorecard. How well is your operations operating? S- you know, servicing these lines of business in your company?
In 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 Kelly, in your world, how many how many items in the balance square card have you seen?
Oh.
Depends.
Um, it's a multi-page document. I don't really know.
Literally, it could be dozens, hundreds, Karina, in your world.
Hundreds.
It depends on the size of the company and the maturity of the company.
Wow.
Right? If you, if you want to start with, you know, I had one company, literally, we started with twelve.
Okay.
Right? And and here we are, you know, a few years later, uh they're in the range of three hundred.
Wow.
Uh but 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 that's because their individual competency areas grew well. They matured correctly with the right controls established, right? A very robust vendor management program that has like fifteen point checks in it that they didn't even have before, right? They have, they have very robust competency areas for DR, for for all of your basics, change management, incident management. They get evidence from their vendors as well, feeding into incident management a lot. So but we started with twelve, so it depends on the size and the maturity. You got to start somewhere.
Nice, love it. Okay, number four, the parameters used to determine whether a system development project can be outsourced should be primarily be documented in the IT investment plan, resource availability plan, IT strategic plan or enterprise IT policy. That's rooted a little different than I've seen it before. Um Kelly, why don't you go first and then we'll have Karina?
I'm going to guess C, the IT strategic plan. I saw EA there, I would, I would have jumped on that one, but
That's what I was looking for, actually. Uh go for it, Karina.
No, that's correct. I mean, it's, it's uh, yeah, it's just figuring out whether or not. So if you have, your line of business says you have to have my all of my data US based or stateside, uh right? You have to make sure that that requirement is reflected in your IT strategic plan so that if you want to use um you know, offshore as an example, uh as an outsourced provider, then maybe that will sway your decision on whether you can or you cannot. Uh it's just one example.
I was looking at the wrong answers. You guys are both right. It's IT strategic plan. Well done. Well done. There you go. Okay, uh an enterprise is planning to implement a framework for IT governance to align IT and business strategy. Which dimension of the IT balance scoreboard, which we just talked about, will this strategic initiative probably be linked to? Is it the financial, internal, customer or learning and growth?
I'll go with financial. I'm sorry, internal.
I love Karina. You're going to do it would be fun by asking you. Thank you so much. Kelly, what are you going with?
I would have to go with internal as well, yes.
Know your stuff. You guys know your stuff. It's it's internal. And I I kind of just looked it up, was like, I, all right, so remember it takes. All right, how are we doing here? Um
You got one more minute, two more minutes.
We do two more. Which one of the following is the best indicator of good governance practice? IT registers well maintained, and we talked about IT risk register, IT policies and practices are well maintained, IT strategic plan is developed with the business, the board is regularly briefed on IT. All right. Go for it, Karina.
It's the board. It's got to be the board. I mean, the the board is really the thing that uh helps set the temperature and champions this whole um concept.
Uh Kelly?
Yeah, I I agree. Um C is 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 kind of a teaser there because it speaks to IT brand being developed along with business, meaning business um goals. So yeah, I I agree. The board is is for best indicator of good governance.
You guys are going to do great in the test. Well done. That's, at least that's what the reviews uh say. Okay, we do one more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I do, sure want to. Which of the following would primarily create transparency in the IT decision making process as part of governance of enterprise IT? Stakeholder approved roles, responsibilities, goals and metrics. The program reporting a process of service deliveries clearly established. Communications of decisions to IT employees is clear. Balance scorecard results are properly communicated to the enterprise. Question number seven.
Kelly, take it.
Oh, boy. Um responsibilities, goal, metrics are properly communicated. I would have to, I'd have to lean towards A. I could be completely wrong, but I'd have to, I'd have to look towards A.
I think A is, I'm with A as well. I'm with Kelly.
You guys rock. You know your stuff. It is A. They're really big in in the real materials, are really big on stakeholders. Okay, the board and stakeholders, like when in doubt, go for the board, go for stakeholders and go for the ones that say value.
And the word governance.
You know, I have to admit, this has been a long day, y'all. I mean, and I one thing I say East Coast, because I always worked for East Coast companies, one of those in SC, they're always like, God, you know, God, you got started at seven. I'm like, you know, good God, guys, you know? We do. There is no West Coast person I know that doesn't start at six o'clock, okay? We're all up at six, we're all working, all that kind of stuff. So I I appreciate the energy uh Kelly and Karina, and that was fun. And uh this is recorded, you can pass on to people and we'll be doing four more of these, but I know I'm going to be looking forward to them. So
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Karina. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Bye.
All right, bye bye.